All right, we are, I would like to call the regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees to order. And I will turn it over to our clerk for the roll call.
All right, thank you, Madam President. President Raymond.
President.
Vice President Taylor.
I'm here.
I am here. Trustee Calvert.
Here.
Trustee Simon Holland.
Here.
Trustee Kelly.
Here.
Trustee Minetta.
Here.
Student Representative Noble.
Here.
All right, Madam President, we have quorum.
Thank you very much. Right, then I would like to ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. The first item up is our action to adopt the agenda. And I would like to take this opportunity to remind the public before we move on that public comment can be made via email. Those emails can be sent to jbatchelder@washoschools.net. That's J-B-A-T-C-H-E-L-D-E-R at washoschools.net. And you can also visit the homepage of the Washoe County School District website, washoschools.net. And you will, on that website, on the front page, if you scroll down a bit, find all of the public comment that has been made up until this point for today's meeting. You'll find a link that will take you to that so you can read through the public comment as a viewer. All right, so I will be looking for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice President Taylor and a second by Trustee Cottle. And all those in favor, please unmute and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. The next item up is 2.10, or excuse me, just 2.1, which is approval of the consent agenda, items 2.02 through 2.12. And I would like to just check and see if any of the trustees would like to pull any items from our consent agenda. And I will double check with our recording secretary, JJ Batchelder, to see if we received any public comment on items from the consent agenda.
I have no public comment for the consent agenda.
And I would be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda items 2.02 through 2.12.
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Simon Holland, second by Trustee Cottle. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously. The next item up is 3.1, which is public comment. This is the time in the agenda where we would be taking public comment on just general items, not related to an agenda item on this for this board meeting. So I will ask our recording secretary to read the names of those individuals that have submitted general public comment. The Board of Trustees has received those public comments via email. We have read them prior to the meeting if they were received prior to today's meeting. If we do continue to receive public comment during today's meeting, we will take breaks periodically so to allow the trustees some time to individually read those public comments. But I will then now ask JJ if we had any public, general public comment, and he will read the names of those individuals.
We received emails and comments from Courtney Moya, Michael Amada, Allison Clark, Nathan Jersey, Madison Rund, Eric Middleton, Ella Hayworth, Jenny Cordano, Holly Smith, an individual wishing to remain anonymous, Alona Mercer, Dawn Coletto, and Joan Schmidt.
Thank you, JJ. And just as another reminder, in case you're just joining us, that those public comments can be viewed by visiting the homepage for the Washoe County School District. Just scroll down to the, close to the bottom of the page, you'll find a link to all of the public comment received for today's meeting. You can also see public comment received for previous meetings. All right, so then, at this time, we are moving on to Agenda Item 4.1. And I believe our interim superintendent, Dr. Kristin McNeil, is going to step away from the meeting and will rejoin us after the completion of Agenda Item 4.02. So 4.01, or 4.1 is discussion and possible action to buy the Board of Trustees to appoint Dr. Kristin McNeil, Superintendent of Schools for the Washoe County School District, effective immediately pursuant to Nevada Revised Statute 391.110. This is subject to negotiation and approval of an appropriate written employment agreement. And this is for possible action. The presenters on this item today are Neil Rombardo, our Chief General Counsel, and Emily Ellison, the Chief Human Resources Officer. And I'm available as well to just represent some of the work the Board of Trustees has done. And I just, Emily Ellison, and there is our Chief General Counsel. I will turn it over to them to Emily to start.
All right, thank you, Malina. For the record, Emily Ellison, Chief Human Resources Officer. And before we get started with the discussion related to this agenda item, I thought it would be helpful for viewers and for the benefit of the board to provide a little bit of a recap as to what's happened since the meeting on March 31st. As you know, at the March 31st meeting, the trustees voted to cancel the, or to end the superintendent search that was underway and consider the appointment of Dr. McNeil to the permanent superintendency at this meeting today, April 28th. Trustees directed staff to use the month in between those two meetings in order to solicit public comment regarding the appointment and to conduct a virtual town hall where Dr. McNeil could provide a brief presentation and then engage in Q and A with participants and viewers. Public comments were solicited via our website, and through noon today, we've received 55 comments that have been included in the agenda materials. As you mentioned, President Raymond, JJ will update any additional public comments that are received during the meeting so that those are available as a part of this agenda packet. And the virtual town hall was held with Dr. McNeil on April 21st. At that event, she provided a brief presentation where she shared information on her values and her personal and professional background. And she also spent a bit of time talking about some of the work that's been done in the past year during her tenure as the interim superintendent and then discuss some of the work that lies ahead for our district. During that event, we had 250 YouTube viewers and 185 Facebook Live viewers. After Kristen's presentation, she engaged in a viewer Q and A that was moderated by the CEO of PBS here in Northern Nevada, Mr. Kurt Nish. And ahead of the event, 70 questions were submitted for consideration, with another 34 being submitted while we were streaming the event live. In total, there were 167 comments posted on the Facebook Live event as well. We have had seven print stories regarding Dr. McNeil's appointment, and more than 50 radio and TV broadcast stories have also been aired since the March 31st meeting. I know there was an appetite among trustees to make sure that the community members were aware that this was being considered today and had an opportunity again to engage in some, as much interactive I can't even think of the words right now. You know what I'm saying. I had an opportunity to interact with Dr. McNeil as much as possible between now and, or between then and the, the meeting to consider this item today. And so I hope you find those statistics valuable in trying to quantify the impact that we had during that time. Unless there are any questions I can answer at this point, or Chief Counsel Rombardo has anything to add, I think I'll turn it over to you, President Raymond, for continuation of the discussion regarding this item.
Great. Well, thank you, Emily. Chief General Counsel, did you have anything that you would like to add at this time?
Nope, nothing from me. I just prepared to answer any questions if needed.
Well, I think I would like to just take a moment to thank our incredible staff, especially Emily, Chief General Counsel Rombardo, but really our entire communications team for the work that they did over the last month to really get word out about how the public could engage in this topic. As you pointed out, Emily, this was important, I think, to all of us to allow the opportunity in these unusual times for the engagement that we would strive to see, you know, in other times. And I feel really proud of our staff, but really of our community too, because I think we saw quite a bit of engagement from the community through the virtual forum and through our public comments email address. And so we've received a number of responses from, I think, a wide variety of people within the community, staff, families, parents, and business leaders. So it was a great opportunity to see some of that engagement, and I really do appreciate the work everyone put into that. I think at this time, then, I would just look to the trustees to see if they have any questions for either Emily or Chief General Counsel Rombardo, or just generally any discussion on this item. Okay, Vice President Taylor.
I was saying, I was trying to find my mouth, sorry. I'm using like three screens here. Anyway, um, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to add that many of you know, if not all of you know, that I had a I had a virtual forum last night for families, staff, and students in District E. And I was actually quite, I was actually quite surprised that, I thought, well, you know, it's, you know, it's it's the COVID situation, although we're in and so on and so forth. And, you know, you never know what kind of involvement or participation you're going to get. But that, actually, we used the whole hour and they asked some very good questions and made some good comments. And Colleen DeLong did a, did a really good job. So thank you again, Colleen. And Charles and John for making, making sure that happened. Got a lot of feedback. I think that's just another opportunity just to add to what you've said by President Raymond, in terms of opportunities people had to weigh in and to be involved in the process and, and so on. So I was, I was glad to be able to just do that extra step again, to give people an opportunity to ask questions, make comments, lend support, and all of those things. So I just wanted to add that to the list of things that we have been really intentional about engaging in as a board. And I will add, by the way, that got some good questions and really got some, just took the time to just weigh in and lend their support for Dr. McNeil.
Great. I think I'll just quickly, before I turn it over to Trustee Cottle, one more time, remind anyone who might have joined us late, that you are able to visit the washoschools.net website and on the homepage, find the public comment that was submitted for this agenda item and read that public comment. I think you will find, and I meant to mention that it was overwhelmingly positive. There was a lot of support for this move in the public comment that we received via email. Trustee Cottle, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't think it's going to come as a huge surprise to my colleagues that I definitely support this decision to appoint Dr. McNeil as the next superintendent of our school district. And I appreciate the seriousness and the great discussion that this board has had about this process over the past eight, eight months, I believe it was. I believe this is our best decision for our school district. And as President Raymond had mentioned, the public comment was overwhelmingly supportive. My unofficial count was 48 in favor and five against. That's a, that's pretty, pretty significant. And I think what's even more significant for me is the staff support that we've received from our principals and teachers and all of those within our school district receive overwhelming support, not just in this process of the past month, but I mean, I've heard it in schools over the past five, six months that people really had confidence in, in Dr. McNeil. And I truly believe that's around, because of her message around optimism through care and kindness. And I, I think that really resonates with our, with our people. It lifts them up and it's doing a great deal of improvement on our morale. There are a few things that people did mention in, in opposition. I think it's important to, to address those. There were two main points. The first one, to complete the search, and people that were really aware of our search understood that we, we had five finalists. And in individuals that I was talking to that really wanted us to finish the search, they didn't realize that we had finalists. They were describing maybe their dream candidate that wasn't necessarily a part of the pool. So when people went back and looked at the five finalists, they, they came back with Dr. McNeil is, is the best choice. So we did go through the search process. We did see, we did see finalists. We did see their profiles. And really, to me, none of the finalists would bring what Dr. McNeil brings to the table, which is over three decades, almost three decades of experience within our school district, the institutional knowledge, understanding how this district works and the way our community operates. And that's really been vital in this current response to COVID-19. And we hear a lot of our community about investment. We want someone who is invested in our school district. And with Dr. McNeil, it wasn't a question of what is she willing to invest, because we've seen the investment. Out of all the candidates, we've seen almost 30 years of investments. That question is already answered without having to wait to see what happens. And the second point that came up is the COVID-19 panic move. Now, I really don't believe that it was a panic move. We've been in this search process for months and we've seen finalists. And while the COVID-19 maybe changed the landscape of what we're thinking, it also showed the leadership qualities of Dr. McNeil. And it makes the choice easy. When, when you replace an interim, you replace an interim that, because you believe that a candidate brings more to the table than the interim does. And there's nothing against the other candidates. I just don't feel that any of them would bring to the table what she brings. And if, if staff are happy, the community wants us to move forward with her, we have done the search. We've seen what's, what's out there. I believe we have the information that we need to move forward. And prior to Dr. McNeil, from my experience watching the school district in a very short period of time, being on the board, the culture of the district leadership was talking the talk, and it just irritated the community. And over the past, ever since July 1, Kristin McNeil's been walking the walk. And I think it's been a great change of pace for our school district. And so over that time period, she earned my support. I think that, that will be a theme, that she's earned it. She had didn't, it's not been given to her. It's been interim, doing the job on interim basis for, for many months. And this is, to me, the best, the best move to, for our, for our district. And today's really, a really great day for our school district, so we get to turn the page, take a step forward and look ahead and, and see the, what's all that can be done and the optimism and not thinking about what we aren't and what we don't have, think about who we are, what we do have, and where we can go. And it's going to be a breath of fresh air, I think, for our, for our community and our staff. So that's where I am on this. I don't think it's a surprise to anyone. So with that, I'll yield back to the President. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Cottle. All right, I will turn it over next to Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam President. And I'll apologize in advance if my dog barks. You might have seen him jumping up in the window. I just want to add and, and really amplify the importance of the process that we've had. We, this, this differs from previous instances when internal candidates were hired by the district because we did have a national search. We did have, as you both have said, the opportunity to review other candidates, and we shared that opportunity with the public. So, you know, that has been done, and it is different. We spent a little more than $26,000, not the $100,000 that some people believe we spent. But we, we invested that money and we did get a process from it. As has been stated, the support for Dr. McNeil is overwhelming. She has changed the culture of our organization and really has had outstanding performance over the past 10 months. And yes, as Trustee Cottle said, some folks have said, well, you should have, you should have finished the search. But I think it's important to note, not only did we have the opportunity and the public have the opportunity to see video interviews with the folks who were final candidates, but also to review their applications. But if we had to start over, which we would have to start over if we declined all those other folks, superintendent contracts generally run on a school year basis. So we wouldn't have people available to come work for us until the fall of 2021. We would be keeping our 8,000 employees and our 64,000 students and our interim superintendent in limbo for another 15, 16 months. And that's, that's an unacceptable way for us to operate when we have an outstanding candidate who is doing the job now and is so well-supported by our employees. We've, we've said before and acknowledged before that the way you make a great organization is by having a great culture in that organization. And Dr. McNeil has served us. She has served the students. She served the staff, and she served the families and the community so well. So I will yield back to you, President Raymond. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Trustee Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, and I support the motion as well. And just to kind of piggyback on my, what my colleagues have been saying, I think a lot of the things that I heard from, from people was that there was already so much uncertainty out there. There is uncertainty about, you know, COVID-19 and what it was doing to our economy and people having to stay home and for how long. And there's just so much uncertainty. And I think that had not having a permanent superintendent for months and months longer just added to that uncertainty, especially with our staff and our students and their families. So I think that it's a wise move on the school board's part to finally, having gone through the process and having gotten as far as we did and having the finalists and giving people a chance to look at them, I think it's a very wise and prudent move on our part to stop it like we did and hire Kristin McNeil to be permanent, because it's just one little piece of uncertainty that we can put the rest. And despite everything else that's happening right now in our community and across the whole planet, really, at least here is something that's certain. We now have a permanent superintendent who has impressed not only us, the trustees, but the community. I've had the privilege of working with Dr. McNeil for almost 10 years, and, and it's been wonderful to see her progression to where she's at now. I think that this is a good move for us. It just removes that uncertainty, and it just gives our school district a little bit more of a firmer foundation to tackle the issues that start coming up in the days, weeks, and months ahead.
Thank you, Trustee Kelly. And Vice President Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. Excuse me. I just wanted to say this as well. When we, when we met a month ago, I appreciate my colleagues allowing a little bit more time, which is one of the things that I asked for, and that was before. In fact, the, the governor revealed that we were going to be in this a few more weeks and maybe even a little bit longer. Excuse me, a couple more weeks and maybe even a little bit longer, although I think we all felt it coming. But I appreciate the fact that, that you allowed more time so that we could be, let me speak personally, so that I could be really intentional, as I said before, and, and reaching out and talking to people in specific constituency groups that I, that I represent. One thing that I was asked, again, I had some tough questions last night, which I, which I'm glad I did, actually. One of the questions that I had was, we're taking the easy way out. And, and my response to that was, I actually don't think this is the easy way out. I actually think it's a hard way out, quite frankly. It's hard to not go through every step that we had laid out to do. I mean, we, we committed to that and we had every intention of, of doing that. It's hard to not give an interim, in my opinion, every chance to just battle through this thing. That's what Dr. McNeil said from the very beginning. She wanted to go through the search from, on a national basis, national scale, because she wanted to, 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 quote unquote, earn it in that traditional way. But these are not traditional times. I would tell you, for me, and I, I'm certainly, there isn't a motion yet, but I know that there will be. And I'm going to support it, but I wanted to say it's not the easy way. It's actually the hard way. Because these are just to finish it up, and she probably would have wanted to search anyway at that point. But I will say this, all things being considered, after all the, taking advantage of the month that I had and speaking to all the constituencies and considering everything that's in front of us and all of which have already been shared, I am certainly, I'm, I'm at the position, the place where I do believe that Dr. McNeil is our best candidate. The best candidate to move, to move us forward. Not because it's the easy thing, but it's because it's the best thing. It's the best thing.
Thank you, Vice President Taylor. I, well, before we move to a motion, just want to take a minute myself to say that, you know, I, I think I had not had the opportunity to work as closely with Dr. McNeil prior to her being appointed as interim superintendent. And I had no doubts about her serving in that capacity. But I, you know, I very, I took the search very seriously because I, first of all, wanted there to be a rigorous search process to find the best candidate for our position of superintendent here in Washoe County, but also because that, I honestly wasn't sure if Kristen was the right candidate at that time back in, in July. You know, as I said, I hadn't worked as closely with her. I hadn't seen her in that position of leadership. And I have had the opportunity, not just as president, but just as a trustee, to see her in this interim role. And really, as Trustee Cottle has said, she really showed me what she could do, and, and she earned this position through her work and through the leadership for all of our staff and students within the district, I would say. You know, she not only has managed the crisis situation, which I think does demonstrate quite a bit, but it's the work she did leading up to the COVID crisis that proved to me that, that she was right for this position. It was the work she did in her pathway to positive progress and just the intentional steps she has taken as interim, not to necessarily earn the position of superintendent, but to, to represent our district and our students in the way she felt was right for, for all of us. You know, I, her integrity in this position has just been one of the most, you know, one of the things in the forefront throughout all of this, that this wasn't ever about her getting the job. It was about what was right for the district. And, and that really was what, I think, showed me that this was the right. And, you know, I appreciate the time and thoughtfulness that both Trustee Cottle and Trustee Simon put into their remarks, because I do think it is important that our community recognize the time that we as a board, but also our community has spent in the search process this past four-plus months, that we've had a number of stakeholder input meetings, that there've been just a lot of opportunities for the public to engage in this process. And although we might be ending it, the search earlier than anticipated, there's no doubt in my mind that Dr. McNeil is the best candidate for superintendent for our district. And it doesn't have anything to do with the current crisis. It has everything to do with her leadership since she took the position and her, I do agree, her longevity with the district is, is a critical point for me. So I see Trustee Cottle's hand is up. Before we, I don't know if your hand is up for a motion, but I, I do want to have the opportunity to hear the names of those individuals that submitted public comment. Trustee Cottle, did you have any more discussion, or are you just ready to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm ready to make a motion, but you can go ahead and do the public comment.
Yeah, I'm ready to make a motion, but you can go ahead and do the public comment.
Okay, before we hear the names for public comment, is there any other discussion? Okay, so then, I will ask our recording secretary, I've been checking email since our meeting started, we have not received any public comment emails that I noticed, but I know that our recording secretary, J.J. Batchelder, will add that to the list. So she will read the names of the individuals that submitted public comment on this agenda item. The trustees have all had the opportunity to read those public comments prior to the meeting today. And any individual that's watching this meeting has the ability as well to read that public comment by visiting the washoeschools.net webpage and selecting the link to public comment for this meeting. So, I will pass it on to you, J.J.
We received comments, and we did include comments we received prior to the March 31 meeting if they related directly to Dr. McNeil. So they were also included with this. We received comments from Tanya Coleman, Coraline Dubois with APTA, Jessie Campbell, Kalen Evans, Chris Case, Kelly Case, Tierney Cahill, Katie Furman, Natha Anderson with WEA, David Nissenfeld, Dr. Troy Parks, Karen Swoe, Gina Session, Mari Hutchinson, Susan Marble, Susan Kaiser, Beth Martin, Liz Warner, Elaine Simpson, Tony Rader, Dan Hawkins, Robert Enzenberger, Anne Marie Hoppe, Deborah Boreno, Mark Evans, Lorna Whaley, Christina Constanzo, Richard Holdley, Donna Roth, Robert Feigels, Claudia Bissett, Trudy Nun, Chuck Fletcher, Scott Benton, Catherine Howard, Andrea Nicholas, Jeff Lynch, Ellen King, Chuck Alvey, Lee Hooker, Shirley Bert Schinger, Lori Draper, Dr. Kevin Zugel, Lori Henderson, Patty Bernard, Emily King, Charlie Lockwood, Debbie Bryson, Wrangler, Betty Barker, Catherine Loudon, Amber and Mike Foster, and Lauren Olin. And we have not received any additional comments since the meeting began.
Thank you very much, J.J. All right, then I will pass it over to you, Trustee Cottle.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the Board of Trustees appoint Dr. Kristen McNeil to be the next Superintendent of Schools for the Washoe County School District effective immediately.
Okay. Do we need to add the subject to negotiation and approval of a written employment agreement?
Well, you're appointing her as of today, if I understand correctly. Is that how I understand the motion?
Yes.
And then, so she's appointed as of today and we would have to, on the next item, backdate the contract to match today as the start date. If for something, if for some reason something fell through, we would just owe the difference in the time that that decision was made. So let's say we didn't get a contract back. I don't really foresee that happening. So, I don't think it's necessary. If you want to just appoint her as of today, that's fine.
Okay. So there was a motion by Trustee Cottle, and the second, I'm sorry, was, Trustee Manetta, was that you?
Yes.
Okay. And then, I will now ask all those in favor to please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And are there any opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. So that was six in favor and one opposed. And we will now move on to Agenda Item 4.2, which is Discussion and Possible Action to Direct the Office of General Counsel to Negotiate a Written Employment Agreement with Dr. Kristen McNeil as Superintendent of Schools and in accordance with previous Board action that defined the parameters of the Superintendent of Schools employment contract. This is for possible action. And the part about defined the parameters, the previous discussion around the defined the parameters refers to a substantial amount of work that was done with the previous superintendent's contract, but also a lengthy conversation that we had in March at a meeting, I think it was March, maybe February, related to the superintendent's search. So, all right. And I see Trustee Simon Holland. Before we start the presentation, did you want to make a comment?
Thank you, Madam President. I can certainly defer to Chief General Counsel, but I would like to make some comments about the structure of the motion before somebody makes a motion.
Okay.
Want me to go?
Sure. Why don't we start with you then, and before, I'll make sure that you have your opportunity to speak.
Sure. Thank you. Good afternoon, President Raymond and the other members of the Board of Trustees. So today, the wording on the agenda item is just simply, as you know, the Office of General Counsel has a dotted line to the Board of Trustees, and we, at the most of the time, report to the superintendent. In this case, if the superintendent were to bring legal counsel into negotiations, somebody needs to represent the board, it seems to me, because the board already decided on what the contract would be and has adopted a form contract. And as you know, we spent many an hour together editing that contract, and Emily also assisted many, many hours. So, but I think it's a good contract and we also had outside counsel help us. So we thought it'd be a waste to, President Raymond and Ms. Ellison and I, thought it would be a waste to hire outside counsel to sit, just basically sit there and say, well, this is the deal. And so, I also didn't want to put the new superintendent in the odd circumstance of saying to me, okay, you go sit with the board and represent the board in this matter. So, just in case it's needed, we were asking the board to give me the authority to sit with the negotiation team, if you will. And in this case, it was, in working with President Raymond, our thoughts that we would have the board leadership team, which seems to be within their functions and their board policy in the 9,000 series, to sit down with the new superintendent, Superintendent Dr. McNeil, and work out the final term, which I believe the final term is salary. As of right now, there has not been a motion to extend the, or shorten the contract, and it, excuse me, I guess it would be shortened as well, as discussed. And at this time, it's still, Emily, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was three years, right? And so that's, yeah, I see it now in your head. So, we're still at the three years and really the only number, the only item that needs to be negotiated is the salary. So I would envision negotiations to be something along the lines of President Raymond, Vice President Taylor, and Secretary Cottle sitting down, or Clerk Cottle, and sitting down and talking with Dr. McNeil and trying to come up with a number together. If Dr. McNeil were to bring in legal counsel at that point, I would get involved. Other than that, I think the only thing I'll be doing is literally writing the number into, the amount into the contract because the board basically decided this is the contract we're using from now and going forward. So, that's all I really have for this.
Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, General Counsel. And I did have an opportunity to talk with the General Counsel this morning about this item. And my only thought was, because the salary is still at issue and because that's a real flashpoint with the public and because Chief General Counsel does report to the superintendent, I thought it was awkward, you know, it was potentially awkward to have the term that Chief General Counsel would negotiate a written employment agreement. So, when we make a motion, and Mr. Rimbardo agreed with this notion, that the motion would be something to the effect that, if needed, the Office of General Counsel is authorized to represent the Board of Trustees in the development of an employment agreement, rather than using the word "negotiate" just because it's awkward because you're reports to that person. So, just wanted to put that on the record, and Mr. Rimbardo is giving us a thumbs up on the screen. So, thank you for allowing me to make that comment. I just, again, we don't want anything that gives the public any reason to question our decision-making on this.
Thank you, Trustee Simon Holland. I think that's a great suggestion for that motion, and I appreciate you catching that. So, I think that wording better represents the intention that we had from the beginning. I think it just wasn't clear in the wording that was presented in the agenda.
Would you like me to make a motion unless if somebody else doesn't want to speak?
Yeah, if there's no other discussion, I think, I don't see any waving or other hands up, so I will ask you to make the motion now.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the Board of Trustees authorizes the Office of General Counsel to represent the Board of Trustees in developing a written employment agreement with Dr. McNeil.
All right. So, let's see. I have a motion by Trustee Simon Holland and a second by Trustee Cottle. And I just was remembering that I don't believe that we had any public comment on this, so I'll take the vote and then I will ask our recording secretary if we did have any. But, so we have the motion and the second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion, or that vote is unanimous. And while our Chief General Counsel is texting our new superintendent to rejoin us, I will ask our recording secretary, J.J., if we did have any public comment on that item.
We did not receive anything related to that item.
Thank you. That's what I thought. And as she's pulling in, I just want to take a moment to thank all of my fellow trustees for the hard work that I know we've all done over the last few months through the search process. And really, this is a great day of celebration for our district. I think, as Trustee Cottle said, it really does signify, you know, a real step forward for all of our community, really, and just an exciting day. So, I know that Dr. McNeil would like to make a few comments, so I'm gonna just wait and she'll have a moment before we move on in the agenda to address everyone.
I texted, there she is.
Well, congratulations, Dr. McNeil. We are just saying how exciting this day is, and it really is an important moment for our district, and we're excited for all the work to come for you. And just wanted to give you the opportunity, if you'd like to say anything at this time.
I absolutely would. I, it's hard, I'm not speechless, you know? But, thank you, trustees, for the honor and privilege that has been bestowed upon me as the superintendent of the Washoe County School District. Please know that it is not lost upon me in any way, shape, or form the immense responsibility you owe to our students, our employees, our families, and your constituents in seeking a permanent leader of our school district. I am truly, truly grateful for your decision today. I want to thank all of those that provided their written support in the form of letters and emails and public comment through this entire process. I am committed, as a superintendent, to always work for the best interests of our students as the backdrop to our collective decision-making process. I believe we are a stronger district together, working towards our goals together, to provide the best education for 64,000 wonderful, beautiful lights of inspiration, our students. I am honored to work every day with our board, our leadership team, our principals, teachers, counselors, and all of our employees who have demonstrated time and time again their total and unwavering commitment and dedication to making our school district great. I know that there will be challenging times ahead. I know that I will be making some few, couple mistakes, but I'm going to learn from those mistakes, as we all do. I will lead with my core beliefs of honesty, integrity, kindness, and transparency every day. We will move forward with positivity, inspiration, empowerment, inclusion, and diversity of thought. I want to say thank you to my family, Ian and Ever, Mike, my parents, my brethren and sisters, for all of the love and support that they've given me through this entire process. You have been a source of great comfort and stability. And thank you again, and I can't wait for tomorrow and what it's going to bring us because we're going to be there all together. So, thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful words, and it's, this is very hard to be social distancing right now. I wish we were all there together and give you a big hug and congratulate you face-to-face in person, but.
Thank you.
Time will be here soon where we get the opportunity to do that. I think, Chief General Counsel, do I now move on to the next agenda, or is there, if anyone else wanted to say something at this time, would they?
Yeah, it's your discretion, as long as we don't deliberate towards anything else and people want to say congratulations or whatever, it's fine.
I don't want to plug the mic, I guess, so if any other trustees want to unmute and say anything, now is your chance.
Congratulations, Kristen, we love you.
We love you. Thank you, thank you.
Congratulations, Kristen, so proud to have you as a leader.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor, looking forward to it.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Trustee Calvert.
With the utmost confidence, you're going to knock it out of the park, Dr. McNeil.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Nathan. Thank you, Trustee Kelly.
Great day for our school district, Dr. McNeil.
Thank you so very, very much, Trustee Cottle. I truly appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. If that's it, then we will move on to the business of running a school district. Agenda Item 4.3 is Approval of Memorandum of Agreement between the Washoe County School District and the Washoe Education Support Professionals Providing for the Payment of Temporary Assignment Pay (COVID-TAP) to Employees Performing Specific Work During the COVID-19 Pandemic. This is for possible action, and our Chief Human Resources Officer, Emily Ellison, will present us on this item.
All right. Thank you so much. I know that you all will review and take action on these separately, but 4.03 and 4.04 are essentially the same item. They're just two different agreements with two different of our employee associations related to the payment of COVID temporary assignment pay or COVID TAP. We thought it was important, while many memorandum of, what's the plural of that? Anyway, you know what I mean. While many MOAs, memorandum of agreement, come through on consent, we know that anything related to compensation obviously can involve questions at times, and so we thought it would be wise to provide a little bit of background for how this decision was made and how eligibility for this compensation was determined. And as you know, we have continued to provide essential services during the COVID pandemic in support of our students, families, and district. And while the vast and district. And while the vast majority of employees have been deployed to work from home, there are a number of positions and services that we provide where the work can't be done remotely and must be done on site in order for us to continue providing those services. As the situation has continued to evolve, the district has worked to implement social distancing recommendations wherever possible. And on the other hand, we also recognize that some positions require more substantial contact with others, and it may be difficult to implement all social distancing guidelines, given the nature of the work. So, for example, when we think about distribution of learning packets to thousands of families, it is absolutely essential work, but maintaining a six foot distance, as recommended through social distancing guidelines, is somewhat impractical. I have to say, I did kind of giggle to myself, though, thinking about like throwing packets at cars. In any case, understanding that some positions require more substantial contact and are limited in the ability to practice social distancing, we worked with our associations to implement COVID tap for those positions. I worked with each of our leadership team members in each area to evaluate every position that had been deemed essential. So those were the folks that were still coming on site to perform work. And then we worked to determine the amount of time being required on site, to determine whether or not that could be minimized or eliminated. And then of those, or of that time that still had to be performed, or that work that still had to be performed on site, we attempted to quantify the level of interactions with others involved in the continuation of that essential work. So to determine eligibility, we really looked at three criteria. Obviously, the first is that the work cannot be performed remotely. It has to be done on site. While on site, the work involves substantial interactions with others, and the work is of such a nature that one or more social distancing measures may be impractical or impossible to implement. I like to explain it kind of as a continuum. On this end of the continuum, we have folks whose work can't be done remotely. So I give the example of some of the work that our payroll department does. We don't send our check printers home with anyone to produce, you know, payroll checks or accounts payable checks. That has to be done on site, but that can be done with little to no interactions with others. Then, you know, a little bit this way on the continuum, there is work being done that may involve interactions with others, but it's likely infrequent or casual in nature and would be, you know, similar to what you would experience making an essential trip to the grocery store or to the drugstore during this time. And then on the other end of the spectrum, I gave the example of packet distribution. We also have folks working in the central kitchen at Nutrition Services, where by nature of the work, they're in close confines with 30 to 35 others for the duration of their shift. And that's the end of the spectrum that we really were hoping to focus this temporary assignment pay on, in terms of eligibility. So based on that criteria, there are approximately 160 employees that are eligible for COVID tap for all or a portion of their pay from April 13th through April 30th. And now that more definitive guidance has been provided about what to expect for the remainder of the school year, we're working with our leaders to continue that evaluation process of essential personnel designations and COVID tap eligibility designations. And we'll likely return to the May 12th meeting for an approval of an addendum to these agreements based on that evaluation. So with that, are there any questions that I can answer related to this program?
Thank you very much, Emily. I see some shaking heads, okay, heads, and one raised hand. Vice President Taylor.
Okay, actually, I'm, thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Emily. I'm actually ready to make a motion. It's certainly the right thing to do to compensate these frontline employees. I mean, they're working very hard to get the information out to the community, to the families, even to the schools, you know, that really need it. And they're taking a higher risk. So I just, I think it's the right thing to do. So I'm prepared to make a motion.
All right. I will just take one second to check with our recording secretary JJ. I don't remember seeing any public comment come through on this item, but I will just confirm that with her.
We have no comments related to this item or item 4.04.
Okay, thank you. Then I will hand it back over to you, Vice President Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the Board of Trustees approves the memorandum of agreement between the Washoe County School District and the Washoe Education Support Professionals of a temporary implementation of temporary assignment pay.
Second.
So I have a motion by Vice President Taylor, a second by Trustee Kelly. Is there any further discussion on this item? And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously. Okay, so then our next item is approval of a memorandum of agreement between the Washoe County School District and the Association of Professional Technical Administrators, providing for the payment of temporary assignment pay, COVID tap, to employees performing specific work in the central kitchen and central services warehouse in support of continuing essential services during the COVID-19 pandemic. This is also for possible action and our Chief Human Resources Officer, Emily Ellison, will present on this item.
So there's really not much different to say, other than this particular agreement currently applies to three professional technical employees that are working in our print shop, I'm sorry, central kitchen and in the warehouse, in the central warehouse.
And did you say just three?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Vice President Taylor.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
That be okay? Okay. Thank you. I moved the same comments as before. So I move that the Board of Trustees approves the memorandum of agreement between the Washoe County School District and the Association of Professional Technical Administrators for the implementation of temporary assignment pay.
Decca.
I heard a motion by Vice President Taylor and a second by Trustee Calvert?
No.
No? Oh, Trustee Simon Holland. Okay. All right. Is there any further discussion on this item? All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously. Well, that's important to accurately and appropriately compensate those employees that are doing some really important work for us at this time. So thank you, Emily and Dr. McNeil for bringing that forward to us.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda item 5.1 is our board reports. And if you are prepared to make a report at this time, if you'd like to raise your hand or wave. Nope. Vice President Taylor.
Sorry, I lost my mouth again. Just wanted to say a couple of things I got a chance to do with for the very first time. One I did with President Raymond and with Trustee Simon Holland. We sat in on a staff meeting with Milton Elementary School, and it was just really cool. They seemed very excited to get together, a lot of good energy. They were really, and just embracing the challenge of distance learning and reaching out to their kids and doing whatever necessary to get them the information. It was just great to see their passion and their excitement around it. And I almost missed it, so I'm glad I did. And then as a result of that, I sat in on a couple of Zoom classes. They both happened to be special ed classes from Milton. And Ms. Cole did a great job there. It was just fascinating to see the difference, to really be able to compare teaching students differently based upon, you know, their special needs and their IED. It was great to see the students responded really well. I sang songs and we did dances and read to students and all. It was just fantastic. So I had a Twitch going on. I had to get to a school, so that allowed me to do it. So it was very cool, very cool. So just wanted to share.
Great. Trustee Cottle.
Yeah, thank you. This morning, I had the opportunity to visit with Tammy Hart, the Principal Spanish Prince High School, and her administrative team, just to hear about what's going on in the school at the ground level about COVID-19 and our response. So it was really enlightening. Going to hit up a few staff meetings in the next week, which is going to be great, just to see staff. And as Dr. Taylor said, we have probably all missed visiting schools. And I want to give a shout out to members of our community that have formed like a group to publicize members of the community adopting seniors and to give them gifts and just shower them with love. Because I just, I think it's easy to just kind of look ahead and go, we just got to get through this. But to really think about these seniors and you work so hard for this. And the spring semester of your senior year is like the best time of high school. And the fact that they basically lost all that fun is truly heartbreaking. So it's great to see the community reach out to these seniors and shower them with gifts and love. So shout out to them for sure. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. I had a chance to deliver some hand sanitizer, about 100 bottles of hand sanitizer to our school police. And the hand sanitizer was actually manufactured by one of our prisons in Northern Nevada, Carson City. But it was just nice to see our police give them that. Even though our school buildings are mostly closed down, except for a few key staff that are at them, you know, the school police are still as busy as ever, because they have to check all of our buildings to make sure they're not being vandalized, or people aren't taking advantage of their emptiness by using the fields or whatever. And then, of course, the police are on hand whenever we have our food delivery, or when people are coming to pick up food, or when they're coming to pick up their academic distance learning packets, the school police are on hand for all those. So they're very busy staff. It felt good to give them the hand sanitizer, but it was just nice to see some of our police. And, you know, they're doing a great job.
All right, any other? Well, I have been doing a few of the Zoom meetings for staff meetings, but also was able to participate in Ms. Littlefield's fifth grade Zoom meeting with her class last week. And one of the most impressive parts of it was her knowledge of Zoom and what she was able to do. She posed the whole class a question. And then on her end, she was able to break out the class into small groups to have small group discussion about the topic. And so the kids all broke out and had their little, you know, conversation about the topic. And then she rejoined everyone in and they shared out what they had learned in their small group, you know, three people in the small group. And so it was, I learned more about Zoom than I had known previously, but it was just great to see the use of Zoom to really replicate what you might find actually in the classroom with the breakout. So I appreciated her allowing me to join and the kids were awesome. And it was fun to see them in the library and joined the call and read a nice story to everybody, which I enjoyed too. And appreciate the communication staff helping to arrange those. I think, as I know, we would all agree, it is a highlight to get to these schools. And I just appreciate the opportunity to participate in any form with our staff or students, even if it's virtually. Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam President. I forgot to mention that I had the pleasure and the privilege of helping to judge the dress rehearsal for Reno High School's We the People team going to the Nationals this weekend. And boy, they knocked it out of the park. They finished first place in their division and finished seventh overall in the entire United States, which is the highest rank that Reno High School's ever performed in the Nationals. So it's just amazing how brilliant they are. And they also had to do their national competition via virtual Zoom. And how, you know, the grit and the resilience and just the excellence of those kids, I just can't say enough. They were so amazing and so impressive. So we're all so proud of them.
All right. Thank you for that. That's great. So if there are no other board reports, then I will move on to 5.2, which is the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, President Raymond. It's been a, it's been a busy, busy week, but a great week. We were able to join Spanish Springs High School today with Trustee Cottle, and that was fabulous to listen to Principal Hart really kind of share, going through a list with her team, making sure that students were accounted for, the teacher contact, and what that looks like on a school level basis. I was able to participate in Pictionary at Lena High School, which was super cool. Didn't know you could do Pictionary on Zoom, but now I know how to do it. So we'll have to play around with that sometime. I don't know if that could be an agenda item, but it would be kind of cool. And then I'm glad you mentioned that, Trustee Simon Holland, for We the People, I was able to be a guest on the national finals this weekend on Saturday for Incline High School. And just listening to those students, I mean, it's always an inspiration in your heart. And so they did fabulous. Our, several of our leadership team members, watch out for some videos that are going to be coming your way, where they're reading stories for our students that are going to be on video, and they're going to be posted on our website, which is super cool. I'm not quite sure what book Chief Counsel Rimbardo is going to read, but I can't wait to hear it. And then finally, I want to do a shout out to our re-engagement team. They did over, with our truancy officers, they did over 500 visits this last week to homes to do residency checks for our students. And they are just doing a phenomenal job. So Rochelle Murillo and her team, Children in Transition, Family Resource Centers, under the leadership of Dr. Lamarcas and everybody, just making sure that our students are safe and sound. And then just finally, I want to do a little shout out to all of our students and to keep plugging away, keep working hard. We absolutely understand how difficult this is and how challenging it is. And I know that your teachers love you and that you miss them. And so just please continue to work hard, reach out. Your teachers want to hear from you. So just make sure that you're connecting with them. That's all I have.
President Raymond, you're muted.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is 6.1, which is request for any future agenda items. All right. And 6.2 is public comment. As we've mentioned throughout this meeting, we are accepting public comment via email to jbatchelder@washoschools.net, J-B-A-T-C-H-E-L-D-E-R@washoschools.net. And I'll take this opportunity to just say one more time, one last time, that you can read the public comment that we received for today's meeting on the Washoe County School District website, www.washoschools.net. On the homepage, at the, you know, the bottom of that homepage, there's a link that will take you to all of the public comment received for today's meeting. So I will ask now our recording secretary, JJ Batchelder, if we received any general public comment not related to agenda items already discussed, that we need to hear the names for those individuals that submitted it.
We did receive public comments during the meeting from Richard J. and Dawn McHenry. And those public comments, they requested to be included with agenda item 4.01. We also see, received general public comments from Kendall Inskip and Terry Gorsett.
Okay. I would like to then just take a few minutes, if everyone could just look at their email and just to review those briefly, if you haven't already done so. I know I saw those come in while we were meeting, but I just want to make sure we have the opportunity to read those during the meeting. Okay. All right, then I would like to thank everyone. And our next meeting will be, again, by, via Zoom, due to the governor's Zoom, due to the governor's directives around social distancing. That meeting will take place on Tuesday, May 12 at 4:00 p.m. And I will adjourn the meeting.